All right, we have a public hearing tonight for Great Wave Sushi. Right here. This looks like a food truck application for Vinegar Hill.
Yeah, I said Vinegar Hill, yes.
Pretty straightforward. Anybody have any comments on this or anything from the public? I will close the public hearing and move on to the agenda. Any additions, subtractions, alterations?
I have one addition, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add some discussion on the manager's report on our server. I'll explain when we discuss it.
All right, looking for a motion as amended. Motion by Dan, seconded by Velma, those in favor? Public forum. This is the time that the public can speak on any non-agenda items. Jack, got anything tonight? About the minutes of July 24th?
The motion we approve is submitted.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Keith, just a note, tonight's business meeting date is also July 24th.
On the minutes?
Yeah, I don't know, just clerical. All right, Velma, you got a finance report for us?
Yes, the Finance Committee met on Thursday, August 3rd. Gail Spoffin was elected Chair of the Committee this year. They appointed two community volunteers, Matt Fademan from Kennybunk and Bill Hetzel from Kennybunk. They also looked at the approved financing through Kennybunk Savings Bank for their Chromebooks in the amount of $1,102,500, oh, sorry. The loan to be repaid in three annual payments of 5.25% interest. This is part of the long-term Chromebook refresh. That's part of the technology budget. An RFP was sent out and the lowest bidder was Kennybunk Savings Bank. We were presented with an estimated end-of-year projection and I gave everybody copies. This hasn't been audited. This is a non-audited account and they are still working on it. But if you have any questions on that, he showed everything that was encumbered, why it was encumbered, and it looks as though if the audit comes in somewhere close, their grand total is going to be, their surplus will be, a little over a million four. And that was it. Oh, and Arundel does not have a community volunteer, but they are talking about changing the status of the community volunteers. I don't know what that status is going to be, but they are talking about it.
What's a community volunteer do?
They kind of, I mean, Jack has been our community volunteer. They kind of sit in at the meetings and bring information from the community to the meetings.
It's funny, I've never heard them talk about that at all meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you, Velma.
Yep.
Mr. Manager?
Yep.
Yes, first thing we have, you requested that the planner, Lee J., show up and discuss with you the concept and about impact fees again. So, Lee J.'s here for that.
Oh, this is like the planning boy where they hand out stuff the night of the meeting? Dan Fleishman, oh my gosh. Yes, I was going to point that out. Good evening, everyone. So, this document was actually written under Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission back in 2003. It is dated, but it is still 100% relevant to the state law today. And it was actually drafted by Dan Fleishman at the time. And it discusses in-depth impact fees and how to calculate them in order to do so. And if you don't mind, what I'll do is I'll hit some of the highlights for you on the whole impact fee program and what would need to be done in order to establish and set up an impact fee program. Then try to answer any questions you have after that. But an impact fees are charged and assessed against new development that attempt to cover the cost of providing capital facilities needed to serve the development. I'm just gonna ad lib right there and talk about the fact that in order to develop an impact fee program, you need to have a well-developed capital improvements program that outlines all of the projects that you want to try and fund for or with impact fees.
Prior to, Lee J., like a TIFs-type setup where?
Yeah, you have to have, let's say we have a well-established capital improvements program now. And we know that, let me try to use an easy example, we're gonna build 3,000 feet of sidewalk along Limerick Road as an example. Rather than a developer coming in and going through the process and us conditioning him on building so many feet of sidewalk that may be associated with the frontage for that development, you would attribute an impact fee to them based on a whole formula that would have to be established. And they pay that fee to the town. And it would go into the impact fee bank, if you will, which has to be a segregated account. Excuse me, I'm gonna lose my voice tonight. Segregated account. And if that money is not spent within seven years, then the check has to be cut back to the developer. You can't hold it in perpetuity. It has to be spent in a certain amount of time for that specific purpose. And I'll get into that in this document a little bit more. So, impact fees may only be used for financing facility improvements needed due to demand caused by new growth. So, if it's something that's in demand now that you just have a wish to do, you can't use it for that. It has to be based on new demand coming into town, new families, new development, and whatever those impacts may be, playgrounds, facilities to accommodate new people coming into town. So, you can do highway improvements, public safety facilities, sewer and water expansions, parks and open space, school improvements. Impact fees may not be used to pay non-capital costs or to pay for improvements required to cure existing deficiencies in facilities. And what they mean by that is that, for example, there are standards out there that we don't see every day that talk about you need so many acres of parkland per 1,000 population. And so, if we're deficient in that area, we can't make it up with the impact fee. But we can plan through capital improvements programming to build additional park area and take that money over time and assess it towards new park facilities to accommodate new development in town.
So, Lee J., let's use an example, the Hissong development. I know that's all done, but could an impact fee be used or be put in order to purchase a plow truck for that development or something to that nature?
Excuse me, so because that development is pretty much built out or all built out?
Right.
You could not.
Right, but I'm thinking if a new development came in.
If that truck is going to be earmarked to be used in that area of town and it would help serve that development, very possible. But what you're gonna find is that that development in itself probably isn't gonna pay for that truck in whole. It's only gonna pay a small portion of it. Other developments in that part of town that you may dedicate that truck to are gonna also have to pay over time.
Right, right.
Yep. Again, developing a capital improvements plan for financing the replacement and expansion of public facilities and services is required to meet the projected growth of development. Funds received from impact fees must be segregated from a municipality's general fund and may be used only for the infrastructure construction or improvement projects for which they are collected. So, in other words, and it's further defined in the document, but we would have to set up certain impact fee for each one of the types of things that we're trying to fund and how much is attributed to different types of development. Single-family homes, single-family homes with one bedroom, single-family homes with two bedrooms, how many vehicles for trip generation, it depends on the impact or the use or the infrastructure we're trying to fix. You have considerations to be addressed prior to developing an impact fee. There's a number of issues that a community should consider prior to developing an impact fee ordinance besides, aside from the detailed technicalities of drafting the ordinance and determining the fee because of the potential effects of imposing impact fees on the cost of new development, the decision to collect an impact fee is not one a community should rush into. And it goes into further discussion. A community must identify the public facilities and services that are being affected by the growth, the type of improvements and the new growth in necessitating the need for the fee. Some of the questions, excuse me, will the development move to adjacent communities with lower costs? Maybe, maybe not. They may wanna be here for some reason. How will the impact fees affect the community's economic development goals? Has the municipality adopted a level of service standard for provisions of the specific public facilities, services for which the impact fee is intended? As I mentioned earlier, a community should establish levels of service if it wants to maintain in order to determine the need for future facilities and the extent to which the new development contributes to that need. Examples of a level of service standard are to have one baseball field for every 1,000 residents, to have a fire pond or dry hydrants no more than one half mile apart, or to keep the response rate for ambulance calls under 10 minutes. So, what it's talking about is developing those standards so that you know how many ponds you're gonna need or are we going to need to have an additional ambulance or two placed strategically someplace in the town to make sure that our call rates are quicker? And in order to do that, we'd have to have all of those costs separated out and determine what they are. And then, once we develop an impact fee for that, those monies would then go into a special account just for the purchase of that equipment. Has the municipality conducted a needs assessment for specific facility services in which the impact fee is intended? So, you'd need to identify what are the fees and what are the uses that you wanna try and fund those fees? How will benefit zones and boundaries be addressed? Again, one of the things that you do is you say, well, you know, if we wanna build ball fields for kids, where in town are they gonna go? And they may be one in the north part of town and one in the south part of town. If one is going in the north part of town, if a development happens down here in the south part of town, you can't take that impact fee and use it for building that ball field up north simply because those kids probably aren't going to be using that field. So, you gotta identify boundaries of where certain things are gonna occur and identify future development in those areas. What are the implications of impact fees on local government finance? The municipality's finance department must have the capacity to assure the impact fees can be properly accounted for. Most importantly, state law requires that impact fees remain segregated from the municipal general fund and be used only for the purpose for which they are collected. A separate account should be established on enactment for each facility or type of improvement for which the impact fee is collected. Advantages, there's certainly direct benefits. Properly established impact fee implement, a policy where the beneficiaries of a service pay for that service. There may be cases that without the funds provided through the impact fee, local voters would not be willing to finance improvements. The assessment of impact fees allows for improved municipal services by permitting facility improvements to progress. Equity and efficiency may be deemed an impact fee to be in equitable and efficient manner in which to raise funds for improvements to public facilities needed to accommodate new growth. Political popularity, impact fees are frequently popular in localities that have seen rapid growth cause a decrease in the level of service a local government can provide without large expenditures for new facilities. Inclusion of approved but not yet built developments. Impact fees may be structured to include previously approved unbuilt developments from which exactions pertaining to the public facilities to be financed fees were not obtained. I.e., someone didn't build their development and they were conditioned on building a sidewalk. So, that sidewalk never got built. If you were collecting impact fees, there's a chance you'd be gonna be able to fund that sidewalk. It may help reduce borrowing and debt costs. It may not cover total infrastructure costs. I think I've kind of mentioned that already. You may have a million-dollar project. The impact fees may only come up to $250,000. That means you gotta still fund $750,000 out of the general fund accounts. They are difficult to establish and potentially difficult to administer. They're difficult to establish because there's a lot of background information that you need to do and that's in this document a little further as far as being able to establish the base information that you need in order to establish the standards that we talked about. And it's difficult to administer because you gotta have an accounting system that can attribute all of those different pockets of money for those projects. And again, if that money doesn't get spent in a certain amount of time, you gotta cut checks back to the developers. Fee revenues depend upon the rate of new development. If you're seeing a lot of development, impact fees are great. If you're not seeing a lot of development, it's not really gonna help the bottom line for doing certain things in town. Some question, the equity of impact fees. As I mentioned earlier, though, I think it is an equitable way of collecting fees. But the question is, you know, is it going to be a logical way to get all of the money needed for those programs? Is there an effect on low and moderate income housing? When assessed on residential development, impact fees may have the effect of increasing housing prices or the rent necessary. Can tell you, I will throw his name out again, Mr. Fleishman happens to be here in the neighborhood. And I had conversation with him about it because the community he works with out in Oregon has an impact fee program. And you generally see about $14,000 tacked on to the price of a home for their impact fees. So, there's certainly, you know, some sort of a fee. Now, that doesn't mean that's what it would be here.
Right.
It's based on all of our information, but it's certainly not a low number that would, you know, not impact the cost of housing. How-to examples, I'm not gonna get into all of that. It's fairly lengthy. It talks about conducting the assessment, improvement responsibilities. There are a number of examples. And in fact, what I will do is skip to the very back. There's a spreadsheet, two pages, that was developed actually back in 2012 by Greater Portland Council of Governments. And it talks about all of the towns, excuse me, all of the towns that have developed an impact fee. But again, you'll notice that was 2012. I don't think there's been a lot of new impact fee development over that time. But these are the towns that have them and have used them around the region. I don't know if you wanna get into anything further. You have more questions. I can certainly try to answer them. One of the things that I did do is pulled numbers for building permits, at least the residential side. And I don't wanna get off-target with this conversation. The growth permit number in town currently is 40. And you've hit that growth permit number twice in the last five years. The rest of the time, it's been anywhere between 26 to 31. So, you're not even hitting your growth permit number, which means there's not a lot of residential development going on at any one time that we're seeing. Now, we are seeing more commercial stuff come in along Portland Road and that area, but...
Keep in mind too, Lee J., that the Arundel cottages are not part of that factor, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, there's 200 houses that aren't taken into account.
Right, right, but you do have the tax increment financing district up there to fund other programs.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, my biggest concern is the, you know, the public works, you know, like the Hissong is a perfect example. When that gets turned over to, you know, if it gets turned over to, you know, a town road?
Yep.
You know?
Yep.
We're gonna be in deep doo-doo, right? We're gonna have to hire, we're gonna have to need a new truck, we're gonna have to hire. And, you know, to be big developments like that.
And I know the question was asked the last time I was here with you folks. One thing to keep in mind is you cannot use it for paying employee salaries.
Right.
Right. You can buy the equipment.
Right.
But you can't buy the employees. And certainly, you know, tonight shouldn't be the end of the conversation. If you folks have other questions of me and I don't have an answer, I can certainly get that answer for you. Don't hesitate. I'm here on Mondays in the morning. And actually, I usually get a lot of emails from Arundel folks all week. And I don't wait to answer them, so I will give you answers right off the bat.
I mean, just to note, our neighboring town, Kennybunk, they essentially, they have almost a million dollars in one account. And their goal is over a million dollars for their bicycle improvement. I mean, that's a lot of funds. I know it's a bad comparison because the population there is, you know, three times the size of Arundel, but... I feel like we're leaving a lot of money on the table, not taking advantage of.
So... You know, there's a lot of upfront costs as well to do in this. For example, you need to develop a bike and pedestrian master plan in order to have that facility in place, you know, report that says that it's gonna cost you this and you're gonna do it. So, you gotta have someone develop a study, develop a plan and a cost analysis of where that, for example, bike and pedestrian facility is gonna go above and beyond the regional facility that we have going through town now. The other thing upfront, and it's not really your question, but I will kind of entertain it at this point is that in order to put this type of a program together, will take probably a year. I certainly don't have the capacity because I work regionally with a lot of other towns. Unfortunately, you guys aren't the only ones I deal with.
Right.
And you're looking at probably a $30,000 to $50,000 paycheck to get a consulting firm to develop what needs to truly be developed to put that program in place.
Anything else for Lee J.?
I would like to present everybody that is being paid until 11 to 13, that this is the end of the year. Far outweigh the possibility of getting a donor here. Also, I would go there in pleasure in the case that I know you're concerned about some of it. But even to establish that, single units are gonna get impacted.
Yes.
Not approved by planning.
Yes, everybody, every building permit would get hit.
Sure.
With an impact fee, absolutely.
But I would think the two fields that I come to mind is public works and fire rescue. Like, those are two blanket facilities that, no matter where anybody builds in the town of Arundel, those two take the biggest hit, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I don't know if you could structure it differently with commercial properties than you can residential, like, you know, I'm sure you could charge more for the fees because...
Yeah, you can, you know, yeah.
But could an impact fees be set up for strictly subdivisions beyond a certain size? Or is this gonna have to be something that goes across the board?
It has to go across the board. It's the legal term of rational nexus. There has to be a rational connection between that, and that means that everybody gets hit.
Okay.
Every new permit gets hit. Yep.
Great information. Thanks, Lee J.
You're very welcome. And again, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, you know, if you got any that you think of after this.
Certainly gonna read this through.
Yeah.
Good information, thank you.
I believe we should totally discard it, yeah.
Yeah, agree. All right. Have a good night, Lee J.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager, we got Workers' Comp Fund. We got some good news, right?
Right, just to let you know that we received a check for $4,610 as part of our membership into the Workers' Comp Fund through Maine Municipal Association. This, I think, is the second or third year that we've received a dividend check. And it's based primarily also on your experience rating. And I'm glad to say that our Workers' Comp experience rating is very low in terms of employee industry injuries. The next thing I have is, was approached by the COS Group, which is part of Kennybunk Port, Kennybunk and Arundel that provide various types of services to community members. They recently received a grant to outfit a food pantry mobile unit. And the unit would be primarily, they're first gonna bring it out to one of their locations in Kennybunk, but primarily what it would be for would be to provide this food pantry to go from community to community in the hopes that folks that need that assistance and cannot make it to the food pantry in Kennybunk could take part in that location within their community, say, in Arundel. They've approached us because right now they're having difficulty as to where to store this unit when it's not in use. And the storage of the unit has to be connected to power because in the unit they'll have freezers and refrigerators to keep food cold and frozen. So, they've asked us to consider if here in Arundel, we would have a location for it. I spoke to the director. And I mentioned that next to our shed out here, we not only have appropriate parking, but we have power there. So, if you felt that it was something that you wanted to pursue, we could at least provide that as an option to them moving forward with this project.
Now, what would be the...
Now, what would be the hours of operation, so to speak? So if this is parked here, would, would it coincide with like the hours that you're open?
Uh, no, right now it'd be uh purely um uh experimental, they're gonna be. Just bringing it out to a location in Kennybunk at this point. Eventually, they'll move it to other municipalities, primarily here in Arundel. I did speak with uh GA, uh Director Wendy Lank, who said that we have. A strong um. Group of folks that take part in the food pantry program. And that it would certainly benefit us uh in the future once they. Decide to uh have a location here in Arundel.
Now, is that just for storage, or is that for operation of the pantry?
As I know, right now it'd be just for storage, there would be no a- operation of the pantry here, all the. Operation would be at the food pantry location, which is in Kennybunk. And or at a mobile site uh where, which they've, uh, they've found a location in. Um, in Kennybunk where they're going to uh. Sort of bring it out and see how successful it is in terms of uh, uh, public participation. After that, they would, if it is successful, then they would expand that location to other. Other sites within that uh three tri-town area. Um, where people then could sign up and come to that location and. Receive that.
So there's a potential that it could be, this could be a location that they operate out of down the road.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. I don't have an issue with this.
Do we have security cameras out there? Because if that's stored out there. Overnight, I'd wanna make sure that there were security cameras in place.
Sure, we, uh, our cameras do access the parking lot area, including the shed. And uh obviously, our parking lot is lit during the evening, so certainly uh. It can be observed. Well, that would be my next question to ask, make sure they have proper um general liability insurance and invent that something happens, they get broken in or it burns up or something like that. It, it did not seem to have any issue, um, uh, a, a good question, though, they, they led me to believe it's just. A ju- a refrigerator and a freezer. So it's not a lot of power that they would be pulling.
You have another question. Is there going to be some type of an alarm or something on the unit? So that if the refrigerator or freezer. Isn't working, they don't come in the next day and find everything in there is gone.
Uh, not to my knowledge, um, the, the thing that they would have is that if we lost power. The power does connect to the, to that location, so. Because their power all comes from this building and a generator obviously would kick on and uh be able to supply them power, but in terms of. Um, losing something because they have a malfunction with a refrigerator or freezer, I'm not sure what they have in store. I think what I'm looking for, i- i- if, if you fa- folks are okay with it, I'll continue to pursue and see if it's an option for them. Uh, as they move forward, I know they're asking the same thing um. To the other communities, I think they were attempting to try to get. A uh approval from the town of Kennybunk to keep it ready to food pantry and then move it when they need it. But they were having difficulty with, with a parking arrangement.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with Tom's point, just wanna make sure that they're insured, if something happens, we're not liable for it, so.
Yep, sounds good.
Uh, the, the next thing I have is um, I would like. To have you folks vote to allow me to vote on the town's behalf on the MMA um. Executive and Vice President Committee for the Annual Elections for Maine Municipal Association. There's an option here that MMA pl- places um folks' names in nomination. On a yearly basis, which they have, and then they provide background. But there's an option here to, to allow the, the municipal manager or representative from the town to sign on the board's behalf, as long as you. Have approved that, so I would seek your approval to vote for the slate of offices that have been presented by MMA.
Motion by Dan. Second by Tom, who's in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, I, I had one other um issue that came up in terms of our, our new stickers. Right now, we've received, we've put, we've placed out over four hundred. New stickers for transfer station recipients. Um, so that seems to be going on quite well, but. Uh, the other day I had um Mrs. Cludier come in off of Campground Road. Um, requesting that we be able to provide. Um, that Norman can continue to pick up the trash in their. In their um, uh trailer parks and uh homes and take it to the. Um, to the transfer station without being charged anything. My issue to that was that I believe that that would be. Um, related to a commercial enterprise, even though he may be providing it as a service to his. To the folks that lease land from him. My issue would be what would prevent somebody else from saying, I'm going to pick up. All the trash on Limerick Road for the, for my neighbors. And take it to the dump and whether they charge them. To, for that service or not, we wouldn't know, but they would be free to deposit it at our location. The way the transfer station is really set up. Is for a resident to come in here and receive a sticker. And then be able to go to the um transfer station and dispose of their municipal solid waste and recycling. Because the taxpayers have paid for it as part of their tax bill. So I, I'm having a real heartburn as to how we can sort of manage. Um, something that i- is probably a service out of the goodness of his heart, but. How do we manage that and prevent not only one, but several from coming up with the same type of idea? So I'm looking for some guidance from you folks, if, if there's any out there as to how I should approach this subject with the Cludiers.
What was he doing it now, was he buying a bunch of punch tickets?
From, from what I gathered by talking to his wife uh the other day in the office. Um, evidently, they were getting stickers from Casella. And the stickers were paid for by the recipients and then. Uh, at whatever we were paying or charging for punch cards, and these stickers were placed on the bags. And so we went up there to deposit them, the fee had been paid. And the uh bags were thrown in. Well, that's all really gone away now, there's no more punch cards. And the only thing that's required is that a resident have a sticker on their vehicle in order to deposit their stuff. Now, if a truck pulled up and it was loaded. With, with um. With trash. My first question to be, where did all the trash come from? It can't be just from your residence. And um, that to me would end up being a commercial enterprise. And is a disposal issue someplace else for that kind of. Um, stuff, I mentioned, you know, why don't you get a dumpster in there, well, we, we don't want a dumpster, it's unsightly. Um, we wanna make sure the place is clean, so I'm not sure how we approach this. Uh, and solve their issue um without opening up a whole other can of worms.
So, the homes that are owned by individuals there, they pay taxes, right?
Yes, they do, they're entitled to a sticker. His issue is, well, that maybe they won't come in and get a sticker and the trash will be sitting there, well. I don't know what to tell him about that. Other than. You know, maybe a dumpster is appropriate and there's a fee established per lot to pay for the dumpster. I'm not sure.
Any thoughts? Suggestions? I agree with you, though, about the commercial.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I, you know.
Precedents of neighborhoods now, yeah.
Right, what would stop somebody from being a. Good neighbor and charging their, their neighbor five bucks every week to take their trash to the dump? And so that goes into his pocket.
And we've, we've got other trailer parks too, that they could be doing the same thing.
Correct.
And they could easily put a fence, they got enough property there that they could put a fence and not see the dumpster.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, they inquired about it, I told them that I would bring, bring it forward to you folks, but I was having some heartburn as to how I could. Uh, you know, how I could administer that and stay within the, uh confines of what we try to accomplish with the stickers.
Yeah, I'm against it personally. I mean, we have several roads in this town that. There are multiple communities, they're not just Arundel. You know, like the trailer park on one eleven is Arundel then Bedford, so if someone did the same. Situation out there, then who knows, you know, some of that trash might not even be a Rundle residence trash.
Correct.
Denet Road, same thing, that's three towns. Lyman, Bedford, Arundel.
Some, something to think about, at this point, my position would be um. That we cannot honor. That, that would have to be some other. Process that they put together to take care of their customers, if in fact they. Um, are gonna continue to pick up their trash. Now, eh, speaking of, speaking of that, uh, last week, um, uh, Velma came in and saw me about. Um, the uh employees of Casella really not being attentive to taking care of the. The, looking at stickers, and in fact, I think her and Charlie found a couple of them playing on their phones in the office, so. Um, I addressed that quickly with uh. Chris McHale at Casella, and he indicated to me that he was going to get right on it now. What, what that means and how it portrayed, but what I told him, the concern I have is that. Those folks should be out there identifying those stickers that are on those vehicles. And then by September first, they all should have red stickers, if they don't, they cannot deposit their refuse there, so. I think it's a concern, I expressed it to him, he indicated uh that he would take care of it. Um, when you're up there, please, if you see something, just let me know. Um, I'm not up there as frequently as a lot of you folks are. Uh, the other thing I addressed with him was the uncleanliness of the area, I thought that. His staff could do a lot better job of picking up the parking lot. Uh, when I was up there and observed it, there was a lot of debris on the ground, which I think is. It needs to be cleaned, um.
They certainly have a lot of downtime.
They got, they got time to do it, um, and I'm not saying they have to do it on a Saturday, but certainly a Wednesday. Uh, there's gotta be a lot more uh infrequent customers that are coming there on a Wednesday as opposed to Saturday, so. Um, just a work in progress, we did get our first bill. Um, and it, it went up about what I thought it was going to go, about. Um, fifty percent more than what we were in before, so it was about seventy-eight. Um, seventy-eight hundred dollars when we had it. I- initially, now it's fifteen thousand dollars. So it's about, about half, so we'll keep an eye on that and make sure that uh it stays within those parameters. Um, I think that's what we anticipated and what Casella anticipated, so we'll keep ahead on it.
Is, is that bill a constant bill, is that based on tonnage?
It's based on, it's based on their, on the tonnage that they're hauling, we don't get a haul fee. We, we just get the tonnage, if, if we were paying for the hauling. Then I certainly would be more receptive to making sure that those, those containers were closer to ten to twelve tons. As opposed to what I was observing today was anywhere between four and eight ton. So they're hauling them because, you know, they're there. Um, and they've got an empty container and they just haul one out, put another one in. Um, we do receive an energy fee, but it's only about, it ended up being about five, five hundred dollars for the month, so. I didn't see that as being exorbitant.
Would it be cool of us to make a good-sized sign? To go up there so that as you drive in and go to the right behind the building, there's a huge sign right there that says. Um, for taxpayers slash residents only, sticker required. Uh, you know, not just a small sign, something that, that uh. Big letters in bright red that, that anyone could see that they couldn't miss.
Sort of like a large street sign.
Yes.
And then put it on a post, you know, so it's, so people can clearly see it.
This is for taxpayers, residents only.
Yeah.
Sticker required.
That seems like a good plan, something that'd be reasonable.
Is. Do you have one more comment?
Yep.
Um. For items that you have to pay, that list, is that posted over there? Cause I've never, I've never noticed if that was there or not.
Not sure, we have the brochures that were created by Casella, and they haven't indicated to me that they're increasing the fees. Though I had an individual come in today. And indicated to me that, that our fees that are being charged by Casella are far more than what he can dispose of in Sanford. So. Um.
I think those fees are pretty cheap.
Right, and his concern was. Um, that he paid for a forty-dollar. Punch card, and he's not gonna bring his disposals there, so that's another issue that I'm working out with Casella as to. As to those citizens who have punch cards, that we're not honoring anymore, but they can use them for. Solid uh for other items, but he's indicating to me he can. Deposit those in Sanford far cheaper than he can leave them in a, a Rundle. So I'm not sure if that's true or not, but that was his argument to me today.
Well, that brochure that Casella had, I, I think that should be posted somewhere, cause I've had people ask, and I've. I've shared that on social media, I, I took out the, you know, the punch card stuff, but.
Yep.
Um, I think we should make that available, even on our, maybe on our website, so people know how much it costs to. Get rid of a refrigerator or sofa or what have you.
Sure, I, I think it's, eh, it may be on there uh at some location, I'll have to double check.
On the website?
On the website.
Looked all over.
Did you? Okay.
Perhaps another instance where a large sign is needed.
That's all I have, thank you.
You wanted to add uh something about the server, right?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, um, thanks for reminding me. Um, the last two Mondays that I've been in, I usually am in the office by six fifteen in the morning. Uh, make sure that things are ready to roll, and we have found that our, our server. And our internet connection have been down. Um, the first time it happened, I was able to reboot and get it back up today. Um, that wasn't the case, we had to have uh our IT folks, Ralph, come in. And indicated to me that once he reset it. Um, because of its years of use. Um, it's life expectancy is at the end of its life, even though it's only been three years. This uh, this equipment gets used every day pretty hardly, so. Um, he's suggested that we uh replace it. Um, and he provided a fee from, uh, cost. To replace um both the server unit as well as the. Uninterrupted power source backup that goes with the unit. Because what's happened the last couple, I guess, last. Two weekends, we've lost power here. Eh, at the municipal building, and that has sort of bumped. Um, these offline and they haven't come back on, so. Um. With that, um, uh, he gave me a price for the new uh, uh, Gen Ten Rack server at two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And the new uh power source at two hundred and forty-nine dollars. And I would like to recommend that we take the money out of the. Administrative Capital Reserve Account, which has about forty-eight hundred dollars in it. To cover the cost to purchase the new server and the power backup.
Do we have a UPS now?
Yes.
And what's wrong with that one, that was not enough to, to?
Correct, it was bought at the same time as the, um, as the server we have, and he said, indicates that the UPS is, is bad as well.
It's not usually go bad.
I'm just telling you what I've been told. For two hundred and fifty dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
So I would need a, a motion in a second to allow us to use our capital reserve funds for that purchase.
What's the total cost, Keith, for both?
Well.
Twenty-five fifty, roughly.
No.
Twenty-three fifty, sorry.
Hey, I make a motion that we approve uh the use of those funds, two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for a new server and UPS.
Motion by Dan. Seceded by Tom, any more discussion on this?
Taking it out of the cap.
Taking it out of the capital reserve.
Well, let's make sure we got the right. We got three thousand for the server.
I thought you said two thousand.
I thought you said two thousand.
Two thousand nine hundred and ninety nine, so three thousand dollars.
I thought you said two thousand ninety nine.
No.
Ah, alright.
So we have three thousand for the server and two hundred and fifty bucks for the.
So it's alright. So it's three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
There you go.
Yeah. I'm in my motion, three thousand two hundred and fifty bucks.
Three thousand two hundred and fifty.
Taken out of the admin capital reserve.
Yes, admin capital reserve.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Tom. Uh, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Happy spending.
And everything will be backed up, right? We're not going to lose anything.
That is correct.
Alright, moving on. We have a request for building permit fee consideration. That must be you. If you could just come to the table, make sure the microphone's on. Introduce yourselves and present away.
Put green light on.
Green lights on, so you're all set.
Um, uh, Lori Novak.
Brandon Solari.
Um, we are doing the self-storage and um, uh, shop building up on Route One. Um. At twenty four ninety two, it's going to be called Watchdog Self-Storage and um, Brandon's uh landscaping business is going to be expanding with a shop building as well. As well as his home is there. Um, I don't know how many of you have driven up Route One, but you can see there's quite a bit of. Blasting we've had to do considerably more than we anticipated. Um, we are contracted, uh, we contracted Patgo. The project started, Brandon started this in two thousand seventeen. Um, then we had COVID, then we had price increases, then we had interest increases. So um, Patgo is our general contractor for the project. Um, we um, had a building permit that was submitted on May fifteenth for blasting and site work. Um, and part of that that they wrote on the permit, so this isn't anything we submit, Paco does all this. We. We're just asked to come before the board because this is kind of a weird circumstance and. I'm sure you've never had this happen before. So um, Paco usually submits the permits. On May fifteenth, they submitted a permit. Um, that listed site work and the self-storage, the shop building and self-storage. The plans weren't submitted with that project. The shop plans, I believe, were completed. The um. The self-storage plans were still with John Einseidler, who was completing them and the life safety piece. Those were completed. So on May fifteenth, we did site work permit, paid that fee, blasting fee and did all that. And then um. The July sixth, we received the um, stamped the plans from John Einseidler with the life safety and everything was completed there. Um, it appears that there was some like vacation at Paco. So they um, submitted them on July seventeenth. And the permit was increased on July tenth. So it could have been. Submitted earlier, but they didn't think that there was any urgency to it. Um, because the buildings aren't going to be delivered until a bit later. So um, there was time to do that. So. We had a seven day window where the price went up fifty percent um, on the building permit fees. Um, I spoke with um, Jim and with Keith and um. Uh, Lee Jay has all been spoken and Paco spoke to them and said, hey, we can't, you know, this was kind of on us. We came in. It's seven days. It's eleven thousand dollars is the difference to us, which is a considerable amount of money. For us right now with a project of this size and with the additional blasting that we've had to incur. Um, and unsuitable materials and you name it. Um, so uh, because of that, um, it was not, uh, it's not a decision. That any one of the people we'd spoken to could make on their own. Um, they did suggest that maybe we could come before you. And see if we could just ask for, um, because of the timing of of the permitting and that we were in process with our permitting. It wasn't like. You know, we had, this was brand new and we just came in on the seventeenth. We had kind of a permit in process and our May fifteenth permit did say. Site work, shop building and self-storage units, um, that maybe we could get um, some leniency from you all and we could have the original. Um, permit fee of twenty two thousand dollars um, uh, granted to us um, to move forward. And happy to answer any questions about the project. And if anyone needs rocks, give me a call.
Yeah, there's a ton there.
We have a lot of rocks.
When when was your approval uh, from the planning board?
Um, the planning board approval was in March.
For what you're building now?
Correct, for the entire project. Correct.
So even without a set of stamped drawings, they approved the whole.
Correct. All the site work and everything. And well, we had already worked through a lot of the, we had the drawings. We didn't have the stamped drawings, but. Self-storage isn't very complicated. So it was like, this is what we're doing for buildings and we had pretty much gone through a lot of it before we went through town. We went through um, fire before we went through town. So when we got to the planning board, we had checked pretty much all the boxes we needed to. We just needed to have the final. Um, architectural and engineering plans done.
And Paco came to us saying that they had never been, Bill replied that there was potential to change. So they said that. You know, they had no idea this was coming or they could have submitted sooner.
So what this is, so we're here as the people having to write the check. So. Um.
So you're already writing a check for twenty two thousand?
Correct. As well as as well as impact piece. His CMP impact piece, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, because they've got, they got planning board approval back in March on this. You know, um. I'm okay with waiving, going to the old fee, but that's just my.
Well, you established the fees. I'm not quite. To waive a portion fee?
No, no, I totally understand. Like I said, this is a, this is a seven day window that we got caught in and so. Right, right.
Um, I understand the argument, but I'm looking at it.
Sure, how you can do it. Correct. Understood.
Do that.
Understood.
But like a lot of people coming, they were asking again, saying, we didn't hear about the fees, but it doesn't apply.
Well, I think that's what Paco's, um, their thing saying to us is that we were kind of in process with this. Application that does state on it on May fifteenth. So that's, that was the only. Um, argument that I think, and you know, we weren't thirty days coming out. We were kind of seven days.
Well, you do have the authority. You do establish the fees. Now you bring up a a good point as to whether or not you have the authority to waive a fee. Um. If you decide to waive, I think that you have to make it pretty clear within a. Um, within a motion in a second, the purpose of why you're waiving the fee. Um, and you know, at that point. Um, I think one could argue one way or the other that uh, that you're trying to do your due diligence in reference to that. As I, you know, they they did come to staff and obviously we don't have the. We don't have the authority to waive any anything. So the fees were established and uh, and they charged accordingly. So. Um, that's why they're here tonight.
Yeah, I think for me, if if they were, if they hadn't had their. Planning board approval, yeah, they're working through all of the, you know, sketch review, sketch plan review and all that. Still haven't had approval yet, but. I mean, they got the approval back in March. From the planning board. So that, to me, that's the. That's the thing that makes me feel a little bit better about this.
Oh, I like the process, the package. An application we made for a permit, uh, identifying what the project was. Um, this is just another commitment that needed to. Move forward with it and everybody knew, uh, at that. So that's why I say I think they had a pending, the argument we made had a pending application.
Right, right. They had an excavation. Was it an excavation permit is what is it called? Yeah, site work permit.
Plastic. It already got the plastic and then this was the site.
Yeah, Jim issued that and then the completed building permit application was submitted. Um, as they described on the seventeenth. So that that's where the hiccup is.
We were two months into construction. When the change happened. But back in March, the planning board approved the entire project.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then we had the fees afterward.
After, yeah.
Yeah, I think the timing is what uh, concerned uh.
Four months.
Uh, them, uh, simply because you approved your fee modifications based on the. Land use planning office, um, uh, information on July tenth. And then the application was completed and submitted on the seventeenth. That's why.
Yeah, they had submitted it July seventh, right? You submitted.
Uh, the plans were ready on July sixth from the architect and they were delivered to Paco, ready to go. But again, I don't think Paco thought there was any urgency to submit them right away and somebody was on vacation. So. When that person came back from vacation, they submitted them and then they were, they discovered that in that time. Um, between the sixth, the tenth, the sixth we got them, the tenth, the fees went up, the seventeenth we submitted for um, the permit.
Well. If we have the approval to do so.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we 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 stick to the old fees for this instance.
It.
Give the approval in March.
Based on the planning board approval in March, the the excavation permit that they got in May, was it? And then their submitting of their building permit application in July. I think you need to be quite clear on that because I want to avoid. As as Tomig expressed, that, you know, we we waive one now and what's going to stop somebody from coming forward to. To try to change uh, the next fee going forward. So you have to be quite clear as to why you're doing it.
Motion, motion by Dan.
Yeah.
Second that.
Second by Velma. Any more discussion on this issue at all? All those in favor for waiving the fee back to the original. Um, fee.
Yeah, I don't know what the total fee was, twenty two and some change.
Two thousand and it was going to go to um, thirty three thousand.
Even, twenty two thousand dollars even and then.
Uh, I don't know exactly. It was forty four thousand square feet at fifty cents a square foot.
Uh, all those in favor for this motion? Anybody object on? So move.
Yeah, I'll have them deliver a check tomorrow. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Let me get it, let me get them, uh, let me give note. I'll make sure I give notice to the to the land use office tonight. But via email. So if you walk in at seven o'clock, don't be too enthusiastic right off the bat, okay?
Okay, alright.
We'll be here by Thursday.
Yes. Correct.
Yeah.
It's huge.
Alright, Mr. Stevenson.
How come every time you're here, it's for money?
Actually, not that much money this time. Uh, so, uh, let me just. Had to do a little research. Uh, around seven eleven, we put out an RFP closed on August seventh. For a. Diesel particular removal system for the station. Uh, we applied for FEMA grant um, last year. Uh, we were awarded the grant, um, as you can see on the paperwork. Uh, their grant was awarded for a total amount of fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty five cents. With a five percent match from the town of Rundle for twenty five nineteen oh five. For a total amount of fifty two nine hundred. Uh. The proposal by uh. Air Cleaning Specialists of New England, um, was fifty one thousand, four hundred dollars. We put out the RFP, we only had one bidder on it. It happened to be uh, clean, uh, air cleaning specialists of New England. They came in at forty nine, six, twenty. So we just need your approval to go ahead and have this work completed.
So Andy, that changes the Rundle match to twenty four eighty one?
Yep.
It's five percent.
And where are those funds? What account are those funds coming out of?
The the twen- the five percent match, we put it in the budget this year.
So that's already in the budget?
That was already in the budget.
I don't remember that.
Does everybody know what the? The primal vent system is? Does he have to explain that to you? Okay.
What do you think, board? Want to ante up five percent for?
It wasn't a particular online item for that. Um, it was included in the operation cost.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion by Velma. Seconded by Phil. Any more discussion?
Cheap for us.
All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, we have a mass gathering permit. Application. This is for Rundle Historical Society. Is that what I saw?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, this is their annual.
Yeah.
Heritage Day, yep.
Yeah, make a motion, we approve and waive the fee.
Well, you're all about waiving fees tonight, aren't you?
Well, we always do for them, so.
Motion by Dan. Seconded by Phil.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
I abstain.
With one stay. We have a food truck application. This was the public hearing we had earlier. Uh, great wave sushi.
Yes, all the, all the paperwork is there. They have paid their fee for their one day event. I think it's on August twenty fifth from three to nine PM. Um. And again, this is part of that whole approval process through the planning board. Uh, for the location of the food trucks that are being operated on a variety of days and times at the Vinegar Hill Music Theater.
Make a motion, we approve. Great wave sushi.
Motion by Dan.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Velma. All those in favor? That's with one abstention.
And why are you abstaining?
We have to sign this, Keith, or no?
I don't believe so. No.
When, when, uh, when someone abstains. In the minutes of the meeting. Shouldn't it be, or shouldn't it be bar as abstaining? So it would be perceived, perceived as a no vote?
What I generally do is I put four, zero, one. In the abstention, I'll put the person's name next to that one. So it's. It's an abstention. So that's how I, that's how I describe it in the minutes. So in this case, I'll put four, zero, one, and then I'll put Tom's name next to the one. So I know he abstained from that vote.
The zero. The zero is a no. So there would be no zero. So there's four, 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 zero, no. And one abstention. That's why it's four dash zero dash one.
You good with that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, are we setting the tax rate?
Well, I hope so. We provided to you some information tonight, uh, relative to. Um, the efforts by the tax assessor to uh, determine overall values to establish a tax rate calculation form. Um, in the 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 front sheet that I provided you, um, you can, you can see clearly on the top. That um, we. Our value went up almost thirty four million dollars in value this past year. Um, from five thirty nine, eight oh nine and some change to five seventy three, five seventy two. So. Pretty substantial. Um, so with her efforts, uh, she provided me three options. Um. Uh, with a minimum tax rate setting. Um. The options were seventeen dollars, seventeen ten, or seventeen twenty. Um. And these, these values that were presented here have. Zero money from fund balance being calculated within them. So the thirty three million dollars in our. Our, um, but. Our revenue as well as what we're going to be, uh, what what the, what the uh, expenses were. Uh, has allowed us to. Has allowed us to not use any of the five hundred thousand dollars that was set aside. For setting the rate. So our rate right now is sixteen ninety, so this would be seventeen dollars, which would be less than one percent increase. So for a three hundred thousand dollar home, we'd be looking at thirty dollars increase in the tax, taxes to that home. It could go sixteen ninety nine without any fund balance use, but I told it to round it to. An even number, so it'd be easier for calculating tax purses. If we start using fund balance, immediately we're below the. The sixteen ninety that we had last year. Would be, I mean, yeah, it would be at sixteen eighty something rid off by just using a hundred thousand dollars. So I don't see that as being a benefit for us. And the reason I say that is that part of our process moving forward now. Will be, you'll notice that the certified ratio here is seventy seven percent. I spoke to her again today and we're going to begin the process of putting together. A several RFPs to go out to begin a revale process moving forward. Now, having said that, you already have five hundred thousand dollars that you've earmarked to something else. Which would then to, to lower the rate, we can now channel that money with voter approval. Once we get a number on a revale into a revale. And the impact to the, to the residents would be negligible at best at that point. As you know, that once new values are established. The tax rate will go down, but the contribution for folks pretty much stays the same moving forward, so. Looking at the numbers.
That doesn't happen across the board, because there is going to be some that are paying a lot, gonna end up paying a lot more.
Third and a third and a third, that's the, that's the normal, third go up, third go down, third stay the same. And that's the, the nature of doing a revale, it, it balances out fairness within the properties within the community. And I think we're at that point, I, you know, my, my take on this would be, we begin the process of getting vendors. Coming forward to give us a cost and we would build that cost into our budget next year. And then seek approval at the annual town meeting in June to probably start something at the end of that fiscal year. Before we get started, so that would be my recommendation, so. I got to tell you, I was floored when I saw that our value went up thirty, almost thirty four million dollars in, in one particular year. So. I think we can accomplish a lot with the, with the tax rate at seventeen and the use of the fund balance. If we can recommend it to another location.
What was the effect on, you gave a, a dollar figure on a. How much was the?
Well, if you use, if you use a hundred thousand dollars, it'd be a reduction of seventeen point four cents. Two hundred dollars would be thirty four point nine cents.
You said the, if we go to seventeen dollars.
Oh, it's one percent, so it was a three hundred thousand dollar home was thirty dollars.
So my recommendation to you would be to, to go to seventeen dollars per thousand for this year's tax rate.
I would prefer to use a little bit of fund balance here to keep it flat, even though it's only thirty, forty bucks, whatever, but that's.
Well, if you do that, you're, you're going to have, I think what happens is that we talked, her and I talked about that. The, the overlay goes to a negative number. Once we begin to go below sixteen ninety nine, then the overlay goes to a negative number, so you're not rounding anymore, you're taking away. So I'm, I'm not quite sure you really want to do that, I, I would recommend against that.
Well, I'll make a motion, we go. I'll make a motion, we go with key suggestion of setting the tax rate at seventeen dollars.
Motion by Velma for seventeen. Seconded by Tom for seventeen. Any more discussion on this? All those.
Yeah, I, I do. So.
Anybody other than Dan have any?
If we were. Why does that overlay go on a negative?
It's just the way the calculations are done. When she plugs the numbers into the calculations, it goes to negative.
When we've used, when we've used fun before.
We used a hundred and four last year.
Right, that didn't put us in a negative, did it?
No, we balanced it and we were able to stay there because the calculations were there. When she plugs it in, that's when it goes to the negative overlay.
Yeah, I guess I just don't understand that, but. You know, if we were to put money in to keep it flat, why, yeah, I.
Well, the evaluation wasn't as high.
Right, if we'd had, if we'd had like twenty eight million dollars.
Your overlay would be way higher.
Right, and we would have used some of the fund balance to keep that, keep that down, but wouldn't.
Wasn't, was it, it was only like fifteen, fifteen million, right, last year?
It was, it was twenty five million dollars in additional value last year, I believe, somewhere in twenty two to twenty five.
Right, and you had, you had estimated like fifteen and it came out to twenty five.
Right, and this year, when we were doing our budget analysis, I was at twenty eight, twenty five. So when I saw thirty four, almost thirty four million, I. That was pretty substantial to me.
What did this do to John's numbers?
I, I sent the information to John, John, John and I always debate about the, the calculations, particularly on the. On the revenue and because it's, the state, the state has us take out certain things from the revenue. As we projected into the formula and that just never jives with all of his. But I think he was, I think both him and I were at seventeen fourteen. In our quick calculations last year, we were pretty close, so.
So we got a motion and a second. Everybody all good? Any more discussion? Nope, all those in favor? Thank you. We have payables. There was a tie for the second, so I'm gonna give it to you both, okay, Velma and Phil. All those in favor?
I have a couple of questions or a couple of comments. We've got a fifty thousand dollars in there for a payment on the wheeler loader, what payment is that?
Those are our C I P.
Those are our C I P payments to both our, the front end loader and the Bobcat. It's all one fee.
And ninety seven thousand for the pumper truck?
Correct, that's a portion of our capital improvement and then utility safety TIF. Makes up the other difference.
Okay, what number payment is that of what we owe?
I think. Do you remember, if, I think it's either the fourth or the fifth, I think it's, we're at the end. Yeah, I think so too.
Anything else?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Those you probably already know, but Marty King's wife passed away. And John DeKindren passed away.
I didn't hear that.
Yes, yeah, so hard help condolences to the daughter and Marty. So I didn't, I did reach out to Donna and, you know, mention something to her.
Oh, right over there.
Yeah, and then. Any update on the TIF?
The, the paperwork's on my desk, I got the last piece from the assessor. So it'll be going out here very shortly to the lawyer and then to D E C D.
All right, so that hasn't gone to the state yet?
It has not gone yet, no. Which is typi- typical, I think the last one went in mid-August when it finally got there as well. I do have one thing, I got a phone call the other day from. From a, from a nice colleague, a good, a good frie- I think over the years, we've become good friends. Jack Turrcott, Jack is, is leaving town. He's selling his house on Fairway Drive and he's moving to Bangor. He's sorely going to be missed, in my view. Jack was always a good, a good mentor to me and somebody I could talk to about certain issues that we were dealing with here in town. And was always a very good listener, so I'm certainly gonna, gonna miss his, his guidance from time to time. And he was on the building committee and I think he helped keep us on the straight and narrow in terms of getting that project done. So I'm gonna miss him.
Very much so. I, I just have a question for Andy, I meant to bring it up earlier, the plenum event system. Can that be added on to? We don't know what we're doing with the building renovation, but can, can that system be designed to add on to?
It's already designed for the add-on, they're gonna put a T in on, if you're looking at the station on the west side. But we can add on.
So they size them for future, you know?
It's a big enough motor that they, they said it should be able to handle about ten apparatus.
We're not gonna have ten apparatus.
Oh, I forgot to bring it up in new business. All right, motion by Dan to adjourn, second by, second by Phil, all those in favor?